Good evening. I'm gonna call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Creator, and Saint of all life, we pray that you will continue to bestow upon this community your blessings, the liberations of this council, grant them wisdom in the decisions to be made. We ask for these gifts to be used for your honor and glory. Amen.
Will you please join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Olmer, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1.
Here.
Jace Sneddon, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Pat Rind, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, Meredith. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of our meeting minutes from both our December 7th and our December 21st council meetings. And council, you've had these well in advance of this evening and had an opportunity to review them. And now would be a time to make any additions, or if there are no corrections to be made, a motion would be in order.
I approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have, as the first meeting, we say thank you and farewell to two people who served with distinction with the city of Cartersville on this council. And we welcome to new folks that will take their place and with big shoes to fill, but certainly ready to handle that task. And I'm proud of both of them. And I'm proud for both of my friends Diane Tate and Louis Tonsmire, who once again have been longtime community builders and contributed greatly to the city of Cartersville, not just through serving on council, but a number of other endeavors for a number of years. And even though they're not gonna be sitting up here on this council, they'll continue to be community leaders and they'll continue to do great things in our community. And at this time, before we swear in our new officials, I would like to give both of them the opportunity to make comments. And we'll go in these first.
I've had an opportunity to speak with almost every department head, hopefully all of them. I wish I had a chance to speak to every employee in this organization. It's been an honor for me. It's an outstanding organization. It's talented people. It's people that care about this city. This group, we make policy. But the folks that are out there getting the limbs of, getting the power back on and public safety, those are the folks that are keeping this city running. My thank you to all of you. It has been a real honor.
It's been a great honor for me, and I thank everyone for that opportunity. It's been sixteen good, profitable, meaningful years for me. I also need to thank all those folks who stepped in last meeting, which, as you all know, I had a medical emergency and passed out. Whatever the cause is still being determined. As I was being wheeled out on the gurney to the elevator, I heard angels singing. And the choir from the Church of the Ascension, they'd come to sing for all of us. When I was leaving, they sang "Hark, the Heral Angels Sing." And I wasn't sure whether that was sent off from this place or welcome to heaven. But either way, it was okay. But I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with all of the folks, to connect with the city, with Sam, all the staff, and with all of you who within about work on this council, and particularly, add to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What's that you wrote?
Thank you both.
Yes, sir.
And now I'll call on our clerk, Meredith Olmer, to swear in our new elected officials. And I know that our new folks will, I know our new folks are gonna do that individually, so I'll let you do that in whatever order you'd like. Ms. Olmer, I'll turn it over to you.
Carrie, roll. Please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the city council member in the name of God, and the love of God? Thank you. And Mr. Gary Fox, please. Do you, Gary Fox, solemnly swear or affirm that you support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the city council member in the name of God, and the love of God?
Now that you're comfortable, you're gonna swear, Carrie and I, right?
Yes.
Good. We're gonna take the casual approach. We've done this before, right?
Yes, sir.
Carrie Hodges, Ward 1, go raise your right hand. And Mayor Matt Santini, go raise your right hand. Do y'all solemnly swear that you support the Constitution of the United States and the State of Georgia, and that you will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and the ordinance of the city of Cartersville, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the city of Cartersville?
Will.
Thank you.
In addition to saying goodbye to council members, one of those, Diane Tate, has served as our mayor pro temp. And so with that comes the opportunity to elect another member that will take in addition a motion to add an item to the agenda. Since I've done that, so I'll take-
Make a motion to add that item to the agenda.
Thank you. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. That item is added. So I will turn it over to council to vote for the pro temp, who will serve in running these meetings when I'm unavailable to do so and any other duties that I deem necessary.
Well, mayor, I'll take that liberty. Welcome, Carrie and Gary. And first thing we'll be doing is electing our mayor pro temp. And I think it's unanimous amongst all of us. I'm honored, and I know he said he's honored, but we would like to appoint Calvin Cooley as the city of Cartersville's next mayor pro temp.
And I second that motion.
Do you accept that honor?
I will.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Calvin. Thank you, Jace, for leading us through that path. Very well. All right, now on to more good things. Group of young gentlemen here tonight. I'm just calling them gentlemen tonight. I don't know how kind they were while they were on the football field. It seems like they were too busy roughing people up. But I'll call on Mr. Anderson to step forward and talk about these gentlemen from 12 and under state football champions.
Yes, Mayor and council, there's several things with my job that's just, that's just fun, and I'm glad to do it. And this is one of the occasions. We've, we had, we had a very successful youth football team this year. And one thing I might add is we have a recreation youth football league. We don't have a travel league. We have a recreational league. So these, these, these young men played in our recreational league, and then came together as a team, an all-star team, and were undefeated. And congratulations to them. Congratulations to the coaches. Congratulations to the parents and spectators that represented Cartersville very well in these two championships. And I will call on you to read the proclamation.
Thank you. I have a proclamation for each of you after I get done reading it. We'll come up and we'll take a picture. I don't know if Coach Williams is here that would like to speak.
He is.
Come on up and say what you want to say about your team.
Bunch of rough guys, I promise you that. So, let's see. Starting off, I mean, we had two regular teams in the 12 and under age group this year. And both teams were pretty stacked all the way around. We had to battle it out to figure out who was gonna get the all-star team. We ended up getting it fortunately, and, and came together. It took about six weeks for us to get everything together so that we're on the same page. But when we did, you could really tell. It, we clicked really well as a team. The chemistry there was just, it made it hard for anybody to even be on the same field with them. And then by the end of the year, at the state championship game, we met a team that deserved to be out there with us. And they fought tooth and nail all game long against these guys, which was really the first time they'd been hitting the mouth all year long. And, and these guys stood strong. They'd take it and they'd swing back. And it was just, it was a heck of a football game, from the first whistle to the clock red zeros. And we came out with a state championship, and I'm proud of them. A good thing that he talked about was we had two teams that won the state championship, but Cartersville City sent three teams, the 8 and under, the 10 and under, and the 12 and under, to the state championship game. And that shows a lot of good for the program in itself. Cartersville's future should be pretty bright. And I'm proud to be a part of it. I know these guys right here made it, made it awesome for us. And I'm glad that we represented the town. And brought one back. It's been, what, five years? Or seven years?
It's been five years.
Five years. Five years since 12 and under did it. So, yeah, we was very happy to do it. And these guys right here, they did it all along. They a heck of a football team. Great group of kids.
Thank you to the coaches and the parents who all put in the time. And certainly the players. I've got this proclamation that I'm happy to bring to you. It says, whereas the Cartersville 12 and under all-star football team won undefeated in their season, and their wins included two championships, which awarded them titles of North Georgia Fifth District, Georgia Parks Recreation Association Champions, and GRPA Class A State Champions. Whereas the GRPA Fifth District Tournament, they won 45 to nothing over Gordon County, 28 to 16 over Calhoun, and 36 to nothing over Dalton in the championship game. And they traveled to Savannah for the GRPA State Tournament to play South Georgia GRPA Champions, and won against the Savannah Whippers 12 to 8. Players on this winning team are Bobby Campbell, Dylan Carver, Tay Cochran, Devin Curtis, Jaden Curtis, Trevor Harris, KJ Johnson, Christian Landon, Larry Nash, Braden Pittman, Braden Pope, McCaden Reese, Aiden Rodriguez, Stephen Rouser, Luke Soret, Garrett Thomas, Christian Vera, Breelis Williams, Christian Woods, and Logan Woods. And whereas the head coach, Adam Williams, and the assistants, Lee Miles, Sid Rouser, Brett Williams, are to be commended for giving unselfishly of their time and effort in the development of these talented young players. Now therefore, I, Matthew J. Santini, Mayor of the city of Cartersville, along with the council, use this means to encourage all residents to acknowledge the outstanding season of the Cartersville 12 and under all-star football team. Now come on, join me down here.
Greg, where are the sisters? Where are the sisters? Yeah, we coached together down here.
I think a little more. I split up this one.
Your turn.
Here we go.
You'll be in the picture.
One, two. One more. One, two. Hold on one second. And you gentlemen are certainly welcome to stay and spend some quality time with us. But I also know there's probably TV or dinner or something else. So if you want to, we'll let you go this one time, okay? We don't want to tell you to leave, but if you like, feel welcome to do that. We'll give you a second to do that, okay? All right, we've got a, we've got a number of appointments to make tonight. We'll start out with an appointment to the Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, Mayor and council. With, with the election, we have a Recreation Advisory Board that was started by city council in 2002. And with each election, there are appointments with that for each council member. There are four members now. The mayor's appointment, Mr. Koloff. Carrie's appointment, Brian Thomas, wish to continue. I've spoken with Tommy Hill. He wishes, Tommy Hall wishes to continue. And Carrie has Kathy Hayes, which she's willing to, but I've not spoken to her, not spoken to you about it. But anyway, those are the ones that we're bringing up. And Carrie may bring up somebody later on, or appoint Kathy. It's his choice.
She, I've talked to her, and she's agreed to continue on.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, chair, will entertain a motion for that slate of appointees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item, Sam, that's you, Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Yeah, the recommendation is a reapportment of Jeff Watkins and the appointment of Tom Chenal to replace Kathy Lyles, both for terms through 123119. It's recommended for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Sam, you got the next one as well, please.
Yeah, this is the second Joint Development Authority appointment of Greg Frisbee and Lamar Penley, both through terms of 123121. That's recommended for your approval as well.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion, if not a motion?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porta?
Yes, Mayor, this is a second reading, amendment to the building permit ordinance. As you recall from the first reading that was held in early December, essentially, this is gonna be a modification to the remodeling fee in the existing building permit, something we didn't discover till after getting the city view software up and running. So recommend approval of this amendment to the building permit ordinance.
Thank you. Council, you've had an opportunity to look at this, as it is a second reading. I know our newer folks over here have had a chance to look at that as well. Any questions or discussion on this? And if not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And one thing, this is a point of work. Y'all can, I always say, just signify by saying aye. You can give me a little, little hand something. That way if somebody doesn't, I can make sure I count that properly.
She can see.
Appreciate that. Yeah. That'll help out Meredith, too. So appreciate that. Next item is an annual update to our impact fee.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As you noted, we do have an impact fee ordinance on record. We no longer have impact fees. The fee schedule has been adjusted to zero for the time being. With that, because we have an impact fee ordinance on, on our books, we are required to do an annual update to our capital improvement element portion of our comprehensive plan. With that, we held a public hearing back in November. It was transmitted to the Department of Community Affairs and the Northwest Georgia Regional Development Center. With that, they have approved that, and we are requesting a resolution to formally adopt that.
Any questions for Mr. Manino on this item?
When do we roll these off? Do you remember?
What do you mean, when do we?
What year do we?
It was '08.
Roll them to zero?
It was '08 or '09.
Did we get zero?
When we rolled them back to zero, I believe.
Thomas saying nine.
Just at some point, if council, maybe it's not this year, but at some point, if you don't want to do these, it might make sense just to not update that any longer. That's why we do it, right?
That is correct.
Might be something to think about in the future.
Any other questions or discussion? Not a motion?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Manino, you've got us for a first reading of a zoning annexation request, Z-17-03.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you had noted, this is a proposed rezoning. Property has been properly posted and advertised, re-advertized. And there appears to be no conflicts of interest on this particular case. It was also reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. With that, the individual departments that review zoning cases, and the department have reviewed, there were no concerns or comments that came back from those departments. This property is located at 150 Gentilly Boulevard, is adjacent to the existing Harbin Clinic. Harbin Clinic's looking to expand. They're adding approximately 34,000 square feet. With that, the property is owned to MU. MU only allows for 20,000 square foot buildings. So like they had to do on the adjacent building, they're requesting the zoning be changed to the OC zoning criteria, or OC zoning category. With that, Planning Commission held a public hearing and did recommend approval of this request.
Two stories.
Two stories.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy about this application at this point? All right, if not, we're not doing that yet.
I'm not yet.
First reading. But we're gonna open a public hearing relative to file case Z-17-03. And anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against this application may do so at this time. And if you would please, sir, state your name and your address for our clerk.
My name is Carl Lugence, 114 Oldville Road, Cartersville, Georgia. I'm the engineer on the project here on behalf of the applicant, and just here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions just for? Thanks, sir. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for case Z-17-03. Council, this is the first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration at our next meeting, two weeks from this evening. Mr. Manino, we have another first reading for T-17-01, please.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This is a proposed text amendment based on previous amendments to the alcohol ordinance. State legislation had changed regarding alcohol sales in breweries. And with that, council did amend our alcohol ordinance to allow brew pubs, and to allow special events at the big breweries, or the one big brewery, Budweiser. And with that, those changes, like I said, were made to the alcohol ordinance. However, we did not reflect that in the zoning ordinance. We did not provide a definition for brew pubs, as mentioned in the alcohol ordinance. This provides definition and provides location in certain zoning districts. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of these amendments.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item at this point? And no need for a public hearing on this, is there?
Yes, there is.
There is, okay, thank you. All right, well then I'll do that. Public hearing for T-17-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak for or against, may do so at this time.
And I'll speak for it because this was a staff-initiated text amendment. It was not an applicant-driven text amendment after, and again, we felt it necessary based on the changes to the alcohol ordinance.
Couldn't have just said that before opening the public hearing?
I think I did.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to step forward, speak for or against? David, you wanna speak against it, or?
No.
Okay. That being said, I'll close the public hearing relative to case T-17-01. And again, this is a first reading. We'll take this up for final consideration at our second meeting in January, which is two weeks from tonight. Ms. Olmer, you have the next item, which is a contract for the general election.
Yes, I received an invoice from the Barto County Board of Elections because they held our public election for us this past November. The estimated cost was $9,146, but the actual cost ended up being $10,566.13. That's a difference of about $1,400. The reason for the difference is we ended up having a higher turnout than expected, and had to cover personnel costs.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on this item? If there's not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Sir, Mayor and council. We currently have a contract with Lozen Associates who did the design for our Dillinger buildings, as well as the design for our Phase 2 recreational buildings, which includes the restrooms at the sports complex, restrooms at Hicks Park, Aubrey Street Pool and Bath House, and then Senior Aquatic Center Women's Restroom Expansion. And like I said, we're currently on a contract with them for the construction administration services at $37,500. And I would like to redo that contract with this letter, and just to hire them for an hourly service for specific items, and for a price not to exceed $15,000 as a cost-saving measure for this, for our bond projects.
Any discussion on this?
And the reason you're doing it. You think this can save us some significant money by doing this?
Well, it will. You know, we've, it's the same company that did the first buildings, and the buildings are the same. So any kind of submittals, you know, we've already been through, I can do. And, you know, there are certain things that we will contract with them, like punch lists and stuff like that. But, you know, but it will save us money, and we're looking to save money.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Porta, if you'll do the next three items that you have, and then Rebecca, if you'll come after him. Is there a point in having him pop up and down?
All right, Mayor, what I have is an intergovernment agreement for this 2020 SPOLOST. As we discussed in the work session, basically, the city of Barto County wants to put together the IGA for the May 2018 election. What was in your packet was a detailed list that came up from staff. And then the summary, the actual attachment that was in the packet had the items that were actually gonna be listed in the IGA. I know there was some discussion at the work session. The total that the city will receive based on the number that Barto County came up, came up with is $24,318,000. And that is up to the city council to approve how you want that allocated within the overall SPOLOST.
Yeah, I think as we discussed earlier, if council wanted to, you'd need to include it in the motion to reduce the Northside Park by a million, and then add that into the automated metering.
That's true.
I make a motion to reduce, to approve this SPOLOST funding, but to reduce the park recreation budget from, by a million dollars, and add it to, by Barco, excuse me, automated meterings.
Perfect. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please, Dan.
Yes, sir, this is a fiber connection to Barto County Jail. A few months- Uh, a few months ago, Bartow County, um, had their fiber cut, and it caused them to 911 calls. We rerouted to Polk County. They've asked us to run a, a diverse redundant path for them. They're going to pick up the cost of $65,000 from our contractor to run that fiber cable. Uh, we do have some ancillary charges of $78,000, $7825, which will make up in 17 months by charging them a monthly fee to provide the backup fiber connections, and I recommend approval of this, uh, work be done.
Questions, comments, or motions?
So, they pay for it, and then 17 months they pay us back?
They, they're going to pay the $65,000 cost from NCI, which is the contractor, and then there's some ancillary fiber co- cable costs, and that we have to provide at $7,875, and we're going to make that back over the $485 per month, and then we'll continue to collect that $485 after that.
Very good. Any other discussion, if not a motion?
Second.
Had a motion, have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item I have, Mayor, is a New World Software Annual Maintenance Invoice. As you recall, a couple of years ago, under 2014 SPOLOST, Bartow County got with the other cities, and we implemented New World Software. The maintenance for 2018 on that software for our police and fire department is $34,751.77, and I recommend approval of that invoice.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Bollander, you have the next item?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the annual invoice for the mass communication system with Everbridge that keeps, that we use for keeping the public updated, and the total is $6,825.
Okay, any discussion on this item? If not, motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, Mr. Hassabrock, yes, sir, you're up, and then Mr. Sanders, you're on deck.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The electric department needs to replenish our transformer inventory for the transformer we used at Cousa Valley Credit Union, and we put this out for bid. Uh, we got, uh, we, bids received, and, uh, the electric department has recommended that council approve the, uh, the low bid purchase from, for the Ermco transformer from Gresco for $6,165. And that, uh, for the new council people, that we not only look at the low cost of the bid, but we look at, uh, a total ownership cost of the equipment, and that's for, over the life of, of a 30-year life of it, and, and, uh, heat losses and things like that, and there's a calculation that we do. But, uh, this transformer also had the total owners, lowest total ownership cost all, and so, uh, we recommend that purchase from Gresco, and this is a budgeted item for fiscal year 1718.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sanders, and then Mr. Riggs.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this item is a, uh, bid award for, uh, not to exceed, um, $32,000 to quality-time construction. They're a welding firm here in Cartersville, and, uh, we need to do some repair work on the bridge at, uh, Sugar Valley Road over Nancy Creek. Uh, we have some, some of the beams have some section loss, and, uh, they'll weld gusset plates, uh, reweld the joints, and welds plates to, um, stop the, stop the rust, and, um, this is going to be paid for with, um, 2014 SPOLOST funds.
Okay.
So, we would have done a new bridge if that was half a million dollars, and we can do it this way. Any idea how long that extends the life of it?
Uh, yeah, the new bridge is probably a 50-year fix. This is probably a 20-year fix.
Okay.
So, the, the benefit cost is pretty good on it.
Good question, just in general, and I should ask in the work session. I mean, I don't know how many bridges we have inside the city. I mean, do we inspect our bridges? Who does that?
Uh, the...
I mean, how would you find that?
Uh, actually, the Georgia DOT inspects our bridges for us every two years. The federal government requires, charges the state governments with inspecting all the bridges in the United States. So, uh, we get a report from, well, the county gets a report from them every two years. The county forwards it to us, and, um, and then we, we, um, take appropriate action. We, a lot of the repairs we can do ourselves, uh, but, um, this one is, uh, requires some expertise that we don't have.
Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Is there any engineering that we have to incur? Is all that in this price here at the $32,000?
No, sir, no engineering. It's, um, it's, this, this price, uh, in fact, he, he thinks he can do it for significantly less than this. He's going to be, uh, charging us by the hour, um, but there, there's a good bit of fat in here, so I don't expect it to actually cost $32,000. I think it'll be, uh, significantly cheaper.
And they've done work for us before?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Riggs.
Yes, Mayor, this is, uh, our annual dues for the Natural Gas Association of Georgia. It's $5,000, and it's a budgeted item.
Okay, thank you. Pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Carrie. Ms. Brock.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The county has requested a quick claim deed from the city transferring two parcels located on Monroe Crossing and Alatuna Dam Road to the county. The county has requested this in order to assist advocates for children in applying for a community development block grant. The county is supporting advocates by serving as the fiscal agent for the grant in the 2018 application process. Um, in order for them to be the fiscal agent and apply, all the property needs to be in the county name. Um, and it will help the existing shelter on 49 Monroe Crossing expand and butt up to Highway 41. I'm asking for approval of the quick claim deans to transfer the property to Bartow County.
Okay, thank you. Any, need for further clarification on that?
We're just going to check the interim.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Second.
Got a motion, have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Niket, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Finance report, Mr. Runhart.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we'll be looking at the October 2016 and comparing it to 2000, October 2017. In the general fund, revenues decreased over last October by $27,000. Expenses increased by $718,000. The three areas of revenue are monitored on a monthly basis. Our local office and sales tax have an increase there of $61,000. Fees fines and full fritters have an increase there of $24,000, and building permits and inspection fees have a decrease of $64,000. The water and sewer, uh, water and sewer fund, revenues increased over last October by $137,000. Expenses increased by $600,000, and this is due to increased personnel, increased operating, and increased capital expenses. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last October by $267,000. Expenses increased by $484,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the electric fund, revenues decreased from last year by $1.9 million. Expenses decreased by $192,000. This is due mainly to decreased cost of purchase electricity. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last October by $22,000. Expenses decreased by $64,000. This is due to decreased operating expenses and decreased capital expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues increased over last October by $39,000, and expenses increased by $96,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased from last October by $66,000. Expenses increased by $206,000. This is due to increased operating expenses and increased capital expenses.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on the finance report?
I'd just add that, uh, gas and water, there's a small deficit in water, gas is in deficit for the month, which will be usually expected in October. Uh, year-to-date, general funds are deficit, as is gas. General funds should correct with property tax and gas. I bet Gary sell a lot of gas now, so when we see these months, that'll correct it, too. Uh, restricted cash is trending up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Tom?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, uh, opportunity now for additional business. Um, before I do that, I'd like to make, uh, just a, a brief statement. I know why, that some of you are here to make comments, and I want to let you know that, uh, as the city has always been, we're here to listen, and we're here, uh, we represent all the people of the city of Cartersville and act in the best interest of the city of Cartersville. I can tell you that. If, if you don't want to believe me, you can ask the people that we've been working with over the last week, some of them are in this room, uh, or, for that matter, the last several years. And, um, I will tell you, uh, on the front end, um, from, from the city's, uh, perspective on this, not really perspective, but, and again, I'm not drawing from notes, so forgive me if I stumble or stutter a little bit, but, um, you know, the incident that happened at Two Kane Drive on, uh, the 2:00 AM, I think that was on December 31st, if you go technically with it, um, our officers responded to, uh, to, to a, a shots fired call, and, um, in the process of that, uh, turns out that it was an unrelated call, I do believe. Uh, there was, there was a situation where there was a party going on. Our officers arrived, smelled the presence of, of marijuana, and, uh, from that point, uh, as part of the city of Cartersville's, uh, police department protocol, we, uh, contacted the Drug Task Force, uh, a different agency that we co-do with the, with the county. Uh, once they arrived, uh, the county, uh, people were in charge of that. They took it over. They, um, it was, it was that determination, uh, from that organization that initiated, made the decision to, to have those arrests, and, uh, from that point, they handled the booking, and they also handle, uh, the jailing services in our community, um, and so, from that standpoint, I just want to make sure that's, uh, that's where the city is on this, and, uh, we are here to listen. We will, uh, you know, my only rules for, for any of these public comments, regardless of what they are, we want to plow new ground. Uh, we are under no time constraints, uh, as long as, uh, people, and I don't anticipate this to be a problem, but I say it all the time, we have public comment, as long as we're not calling out individuals or, or, you know, if everybody respects everybody, we're here, everybody's here to be respectful. Again, I don't anticipate, anticipate it to be a problem. There's no structure to this. Uh, I'm here till the sun comes up, if that's, if that's what it takes. Uh, so, with that being said, the only thing I will ask is when you step forward to speak, that, um, that you give your name and your address, so that our clerk can put it in our recorded minutes of our meeting, and, um, and like I said, there's no format to it. If somebody's speaking, if you please give them the opportunity to finish, one person speaking at a time, and if you are addressing, uh, at these public comments, you are addressing City Council, so if there's, um, you know, there's, if there's any, somebody else in the room that you think you want to ask a question to, it needs to be directed to us, and we'll be the, the determiner of that, if that's okay, so. That being said, this is an opportunity for public comment, uh, and I'm, well, anybody who wishes to step forward with additional business that needs to come before the city is, uh, free to do so right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, my name is Raquel McGee. I am ni- I live, reside in 19 Berkeley Place. That's B-E-R-K-E-L-E-Y, Cartersville, Georgia, 30121.
And you could adjust that microphone to wherever it's comfortable.
It's kind of high.
It's fine.
Okay. All right. Um, good evening, everyone, again. Um, I, the first thing I would like to address, um, of course, I know you all have heard me say the word accountability. Um, I definitely respect, again, the Cartersville City Police Department and the Bartow County Sheriff's Department, which I know that doesn't apply right here, um, but, um, I do have some concerns about the constitutionality of the search. It was, I did review the police report, and it appears that, yes, there was an unrelated call to gunshots on Felton Road. Um, we speak about the, um, strong odor of marijuana coming from the home at Kane Road or Kane Drive. However, for 42 years, Georgia Supreme Court case law has never approved of, or it has never passed in Georgia's Supreme Court that the odor, or the strong odor of marijuana coming from a residence, uh, gives the police the opportunity, or gives them the ability to enter a residence. Um, that is Georgia Supreme Court case law, and even if a warrant was to be obtained, it does not even meet the minimum legal requirement just for the odor of marijuana to be emitting from a residence. I understand that people need to be held accountable when they commit crimes, but I also understand that law enforcement takes an oath, and they need to be held accountable to the oath which they take, which is to honor and adhere to the laws of the Constitution and the laws of the state. There may be more to say. Of course, we know that the Drug Task Force is a joint, um, entity, however, and it looks, and it appears as if the Bartow County Sheriff's Department kind of took over everything once, uh, Cartersville let everything go, or once they called the Drug Task Force. However, the beginning of this started with the Cartersville City Police Department arriving, answering to the calls, and finding it legal to enter this home when it is indeed not legal. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, well, um, if there's no other business to come before, Council, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Or adjourn.